Welcome to a candidate forum for Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, District 4. The candidates in alpha order are Brett Daniels, Braden Murphy, and Rosario Rodriguez. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County and the Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission. I'm Paula Lee, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I'll be the moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization of women and men. We work at all levels of government to encourage informed and active participation in government. The League does not support or oppose political candidates or parties. However, we are a political organization, and we do, after careful study, take positions on ballot measures and legislation. If you're interested in public policy or just want to support our volunteer work, we invite you to join us. The format for this forum will be as follows. Candidates will have two to three minutes for an opening statement. They will have a minute and a half maximum to answer questions in rotating order. Finally, the candidates will have one minute for a closing statement. The timer is League volunteer Brenda Main, who's in the front row, and candidate. She will give you the 30 seconds left sign and then the stop sign. We will begin now with an opening statement from Brett Daniels. Brett?
And how long? Two, three minutes? Thank you very much. My name's Brett Daniels, and just a little bit about me. I was born in Sacramento, raised in Sacramento until we moved to Citrus Heights when I was 12 years old, graduated from San Juan High School, and went to Sierra College in pursuit of a degree in criminal justice, and then decided to go into the United States Air Force. I spent four years in the Air Force as a law enforcement specialist before going on to a civilian police job. I spent a total of about 20 years in law enforcement, and during that time, I responded to about 20,000 calls for service. I learned what it meant to be a cop, definitely. And from that, I went on to work for the Transportation Security Administration just after 9/11. I was elected and reelected to serve on the Citrus Heights City Council, first in 1999 and 2002, and then decided to leave for a while and came back in 2016 and was reelected in 2020. I've given my life to a lifetime of service for my country and my city, and been a PTA president, been a Little League coach, have founded and am the president of two nonprofits. And I married my beautiful wife Nicole about 10 years ago, 15 years ago, oops, I shouldn't make that mistake. And, excuse me. I have four children and four beautiful grandchildren. My reason for running is simple. Again, I've committed my life to service, and I have spent, this is my 14th year on the city council in Citrus Heights where I am the mayor, and it's my last year. It's time to give somebody else a chance. But I also want to continue to serve, and I think my background has prepared me pretty well to serve as a county supervisor. When Sue Frost announced surprisingly that she would not run again, it took about 2.7 seconds to decide that I really wanted to do that and continue to serve. So that's where I'm at. Hopefully today you'll learn about us because we are very three different candidates, and you can make a good informed decision about who you should support. Thank you.
Braden Murphy?
Well, yes, and thank you very much to League for having us here today. I think it's a great opportunity for voters to get to know a little bit more about us and our policies before they make their decision. My name is Braden Murphy. I was born with cerebral palsy, and I've been born and raised in Folsom, where I currently live with my wife and our four sons, the older two we adopted from foster care. And then after all that paperwork was finalized with my older two sons, we got pregnant back to back. So we are raising four kids in Folsom, 15, 12, four, and almost three years old. So when you see father as my ballot designation, that's why, is because I'm a dad and I take a lot of pride in that. And I'm running for the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors because frankly, our county is going in the wrong direction. The homeless population is higher than ever before, everything is more unaffordable, and crime is up, and elected officials have failed us for far too long. We cannot keep voting in elected officials who are using their current position as a way to rise up the ladder and then fail us when budgets are higher and the stakes are higher. We need to get, we need to help our homeless, provide mental health services and drug addiction therapy and get them off the streets, stand up for our working class, including in-home caretakers, who I'm proud to have their endorsement, because if you're taking care of somebody that's disabled, you deserve to have a living wage, and the county should do that. I'm also endorsed by the nurses, by the National Health Care, National Union of Health Care Workers, and the Sacramento Labor Council as a whole, because working class people support me, because we know that we cannot continue to go in the direction that elected officials are putting us on. While it is true that I'm the only registered Democrat in this race, this is not about typical conservative versus liberal policy. My main opponent in this race is currently actively advocating to increase taxes locally because they could not balance the budget, and they're faced with the decision to either raise local sales tax, which is very regressive and will affect middle-class families disproportionately, or cut public safety, which would be horrible. And my other opponent says they're a big fan of expanding the jail, but the problem is that's a billion dollars that we do not have and would be an increase of taxes through property taxes on the middle class. The answer is not to elect an elected official or to raise our taxes. We need an outsider family man that cares about his community and wants to make a difference, and that's why I'm running. And as you hear us answer questions today, just remember that my opponents have been elected for years, and their answer is more taxes. That's not mine. We need an outsider. We need to go in the right direction, and I appreciate you listening today. Thank you very much.
Rosario Rodriguez?
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the county for providing this opportunity to share a little bit about us. My name is Rosario Rodriguez, and I'm a small business owner. I opened my restaurant in 2016 after working in the corporate world for 24 years. I'm a mother and a grandmother. I moved to the Sacramento area in 2006 with my now-late husband, Paul. I have been very involved in my community as a business owner. I sat on the historic district commission, Twin Lakes Food Bank Board member, Folsom Chamber of Commerce Board, the Economic Development Corporation, and I was elected to the Folsom City Council in 2020, where I led efforts to create a strategic plan to prepare for the future and create more accountability. As a county supervisor, my priorities will focus on real issues that will make the lives of people in District 4 better: keeping neighborhoods safe, helping businesses create more and better-paying jobs, creating more quality housing, fixing our broken infrastructure, and completely changing the way we deal with homelessness to demand results. I am a result-oriented person, a bit of a workaholic. I focus on facts and data, and I will demand accountability. I don't play the political game and spend my time tearing people down. That's why I have earned the support of the most respected leaders and organizations in the area: Sacramento County Deputy Sheriff's Association, Sacramento County probation Association, Sacramento Area Firefighters, Supervisor Supros, Pat Hume, and Rich Desmond, and school board members like Tanya Krapczek, Michelle Rivas, and Jen Lorette. Most importantly, it's the support from hundreds of voters that are walking door-to-door in the communities to support me. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, candidates, we have received a number of questions on homelessness and housing that reflect the mounting concern and frustration of residents of the city and county. So we have several questions on homelessness and housing. So we'll begin with you, Brett Daniels. The number of unhoused individuals continues to skyrocket, and we know that this requires multifaceted and budget-driven solutions at all levels of government. So what are your short- and long-term solutions?
Yeah, it's impossible to answer this in a minute and a half, but I'll say this: In Citrus Heights, we do it right. We have a navigator that gets out into field, meets directly with people that are homeless in their environment, finds out what they need. Do they need mental health facilities? Do they need interdiction with housing? Do they need to go to jail? And then we have an impact team that comes along, and that's our police department, and doesn't allow for criminal activity to be done. So we're doing something that's actually hitting the homeless right where they are. And the main thing that needs to happen is we need to open up more opportunities for housing, and that's in these safe villages, tiny home villages, safe housing, and get people off the streets, but also get them into services. We have to ensure that there are mental health services for people who cannot take care of themselves. We have to make sure that there's a way to give people a hand up and not a hand out, and find a way to get them into housing. And then we've got to make sure that the miscreants of the world go to jail. That's something that's really missing here. We can't continue to allow theft and just blight and all of these things that negatively impact all of us to continue to occur. There has to be a carrot, and that carrot sometime is you're going to jail.
Braden Murphy?
Yeah, thank you for this very important question, right? Homelessness is sprawling throughout our district due to the failure of our elected officials, and it is important. And I see it in kind of three categories. There is the immediate people that are struggling on the streets, and where can they go immediately and not get arrested with their things, such as where can you park safely, which there could be social workers there and some cops monitoring that, because people have to have a place to go so that they're not committing crimes? And then the next part is getting them into some kind of permanent shelter from there where there can also be social workers and police looking after that. And then the third part is where the middle class and even the homeless people kind of collide, is just actual affordable housing that people can afford, because right now housing is way too expensive, and people can't afford rent or a mortgage, and we have got to make that come down. We've got to put people first. So it's where can people park? How do we get them into shelters? And then how do we build affordable housing? And I want to just say that I also am endorsed by elected officials, but the reason that I don't bring those up like my opponent does is because elected officials are failing us. I would have loved to be supported by the firefighters, but I told the firefighters, I'm not for increasing middle-class taxes. She is, and that's why they endorsed her, and I think that's important to point that out.
Rosario Rodriguez?
Okay, so California, Sacramento County, has adopted this housing-first model that in actuality isn't working. We have spent $178 million in 2023 on almost housing first, but saw 67% increase in homelessness. Something definitely has to be done. I think what people may not be seeing is that homelessness has become a business. Somewhere out there, there are organizations and individuals that are making money off of this problem, and it is time that we create accountability and demand results from anybody receiving funding from homelessness. As an official, some of the clear principles that I would create would be demand clear accountability from government nonprofits and any program that demonstrates success, which would mean that we would demand that any organization that demonstrate that they have success or that we pull this funding back. We need to redefine what success is on the real path to homelessness and treatment. We need to reengage law enforcement and the faith-based communities. We need to reclaim our public spaces. We need a regional coordination with local flexibility, and most importantly, we need to restore individual and communities to bring the issue back to a level that we can manage. Right now, I believe that, you know, Sacramento has, I think housing is definitely a problem. I have supported all affordable housing projects that have come before me in my city. Sacramento is now the third highest number of unsheltered in the nation, next to LA and New York, and so there is definitely a problem that, okay, time's up.
And you'll have more time.
Thank you.
For these questions pretty much overlap with the issues. So Braden Murphy, the city and county of Sacramento have opened or plan to open over the next year hundreds of new emergency homeless shelter spaces, either at safe parking lots or at tiny home communities. Are they the right strategy for addressing our unhoused crisis? Why or why not?
Well, it's complicated. I mean, we have, we have people running for office that say you're tearing them down if you draw contrast. We just heard from somebody that said being homelessness, being homeless has become a business. What does that even mean? Shivering out in the freezing cold away from your family while, by being, struggling under mental health or drug addicted? Not sure how you're going to eat? And sometimes it ends up leading to crime to eat as a, as a business? I mean, what kind of talking point even is that? So, so to answer your question, yes, it is a part of the strategy, but we need to elect elected officials that are going to care about people, be willing and able to walk the streets, go to the encampments, talk to homeless people about where they are, connect them with the shelters. Both, both permanent and parking is important to then eventually get to affordable housing, but we will never do that. We can't do that. If our elected officials believe that becoming homeless is like being in business, too many of our elected officials think like she does. Use her elected official status to rise up the ladder while raising your taxes. We have to care about people and come together as cities, as the county and the county to make change on this very important, very emotional and sensitive issue that is nothing like being a business.
Brett Daniels?
Well, thank you. Yeah, and I don't need a minute and a half, I think, to answer this one, so I'm just going to touch back on something earlier. Braden has a way of stretching things that you might say. He says, "I am for expanding the jail." That's so completely wrong. I would love the jail to close down because that would mean there would be no crime and no need for a jail. The jail expansion is a part of the May's consent decree that is being forced on Sac County. So that's where the expansion would occur, and it would be for mental health facilities within the jail system. But I also believe that shouldn't be happening, that those people should be under state control. So, and he also says, "I oppose," excuse me, that I support raising taxes. I've actually fought twice the effort to raise taxes in Citrus Heights, fought successfully to stop that. So going to the question, absolutely, this is necessary. It is absolutely necessary. If you're going to, you know what, and moan about people being on the streets, that you've got to support ways to get them off the street. And the areas that we're putting together, that have been put together and we're putting together, East Parkway, Florin, Wad Avenue, Roseville Road, these are things that are absolutely necessary to get people off the streets. Give them some dignity also of being in somewhere. Demand that they follow the rules and put the services in place to get them out of that life and into a productive life. So many people just need a hand up. It's really difficult if you lose your home to try to find a first month, a last month, you know, the first month's rent, all of those deposits to get back into somewhere. There's people that need a hand with that, and we can help them do that. There's people that cannot take care of themselves, and they need to be institutionalized. And there's people, again, that just want to victimize the world, and they need to go to jail.
Rosario Rodriguez?
So I, you know, when it comes to homelessness and finding places where people can go when they are not well, I'm a support, I am supportive of getting people to places where they can get housed. I have, I also believe that housing first is really not a model that I would support. What people need is the help with mental health services and addiction. I am in support of a well-rounded program that can provide individuals with services, because if you give somebody a place to go live, they're not getting the help they need, and that, to me, is inhumane. We continue to provide, we continue to not give people the ability to be able to get out of the conditions they're at. I've always said, we allow, we don't allow dogs to roam in the streets, but yet we allow people with severe mental health disorders in the streets, people with schizophrenia and psychosis disorders that should not be in the streets because they are a harm to themselves and a potential harm to others. I am in support of well-rounded programs that allow individuals to be able to get the services they need for the problems that they encounter. Thank you.
Sacramento County does not have an inclusionary housing policy, one that requires new developments to include a portion of their apartments or homes to be affordable to lower-income residents. How will you approach an inclusionary policy, and will you support one that requires mixed income developments?
Well, the Regional Needs Housing Assessment, and, you know, throughout California, does provide, does actually require that cities provide some form of affordable, low-income affordable in the mix of housing. I've been a part of the city of Folsom, and we have approved many developments where affordable housing have been included into development. I think it's, I think it's critical. I think housing in California is definitely a problem, and it is something that we need to be able to create. I think getting people into areas where they can, you know, especially with young people, getting them into apartments that they can afford, save money, and then go and then be able to purchase their homes. But what's made it very difficult also is that we have builders and contractors are clear of what is needed to build more housing, streamline regulations to speed up the permitting process, right-size fees to reflect real costs, reduce litigation abuse, and have flexibility. And that seems to be some of the challenges that we have in the state of California.
Braden Murphy?
Yeah, so there's a lot of slick, fast-talking here, and so let me address that and then quickly answer the question. First, the Sacramento Bee interviewed the three of us, and they called the article, "The Three Candidates Vying for Sue Frost Seat," where Brett said about the jail expansion, he cannot describe how much he supports this. That was the first sentence he gave them as regards to the jail expansion. Maybe he did not know that it's a billion-dollar increase on your taxes. I'm not sure. If he doesn't know, it's pretty disqualifying. If he does know, it's even worse. Go read the article for yourself and judge what he said there. We don't need to build an expansion to the jail. We need to provide mental health services where people are and where they need them. Next, Rosario says all this slick talking about the affordable housing. What happens is, and any reasonable person can realize this, when they go to Google affordable housing and affordable rents and there isn't any, the developers either meet the minimum criteria that is there, and it's a small amount of units after taking up the precious free land, or they pay a fee to avoid those units entirely, right? So don't let her slick talk pass the reality of people struggling. Of course, we need inclusionary housing policies. How else are we going to get out of this housing crisis to begin with? We need an outsider, that's right. It's really important to move past all this slick talking with a fresh start.
Brett Daniels?
Thank you. You know, I don't support inclusionary housing in the least bit. What it does is it forces people that are moving into a new development to pay more for their homes because of a government-mandated inclusionary housing element. And so, as Braden said, the developer can just pay a fee. Developer never pays a fee. The people that buy the homes pay the fees. So that's putting the issue on the back of just these people who are moving into development. That's not right. That's not the way we should do anything. That's an embedded tax. The thing that has to happen is that communities, private and public partnerships need to occur. We just built a almost 50-unit low-income housing apartment complex in Citrus Heights. Despite the fact that we are the most densely populated community in the Sacramento region, we went ahead and did that, and we did that through a good partnership. And it's a wonderful thing because it allows people with a certain level of income to have a place to go. So we need to look more at that, but it's not done by forcing housing into a certain area where, you know, again, I'm going to imagine houses that look a certain way and then a house that doesn't look a certain way, and then how that's going to play on the people that live there, eventually the children that live there. It's not a good way to do things. And so pushing inclusionary housing is not the answer to more housing. Just making sure that there is spots available to create low-income housing is the way to do that and not an embedded tax.
Braden Murphy, the Sacramento County DA, District Attorney, recently filed a lawsuit against the city and the mayor of Sacramento alleging it fails to enforce its ordinances regarding our homeless population. Do you support that? And if elected, how would you address the lawsuit's allegations?
So, I'm in a wheelchair, being born with cerebral palsy, and when there's tints on the sidewalks, it makes it really hard to get around on the sidewalks. And sometimes I have to use the shoulder, and it's pretty dangerous. And to be honest, coming to this candidate forum today, it was a little, it was a little dicey getting in here. We cannot have people camping on our, in our streets. However, as has been discussed, we don't have the housing units and a place to put those people. And the double talk continues, like, we need to build affordable housing, but he's not for the inclusionary housing. He's also not for the tax that would, the developers would pay that would then allow us to build that affordable housing, right? I mean, it all sounds good if you're playing a Monopoly game at home, but this is real life. People are struggling. The housing is going to have to get built. And the way we need to do it is by putting up government money as combined with nonprofits and create good union jobs to build that affordable housing. It cannot be a real answer that you're not for inclusionary housing and you're also not for the developer free, and then you're just looking for places where affordable housing can be built, and people are going to do it on their goodwill, and it's all going to be great? If that was that easy, it would already be done. We need to be combining all these ideas and electing outside leaders because they have had their chance. Ask yourself, how's Citrus Heights looking compared to it was when Sunrise Mall is booming? Are the roads good? Is it affordable? We need an outside leader.
Rosario Rodriguez?
I do support Ten Ho's efforts to sue the city of Sacramento to be able to get some emphasis put in on the problem. Right now, you know, when we look at, I look, I remember a story that hit the paper a couple of months ago where Sheriff Cooper interviewed and his team, they interviewed about 800 people, and only one accepted the offer of housing. And so it definitely is, is a problem when we have people that are industries that don't want to get off the streets, and we need to find a way to be able to get them the help they need. I also believe that there needs to be a collaborative approach to this problem. Right now, we have every single city and every single town within the unincorporated areas working in silos to fix the problem, and it just can't function that way. The right hand needs to know what the left hand is doing. We need to be able to have some sort of communication amongst all of the cities and towns in the region to be able to address this problem, but I absolutely do support Ten Ho's lawsuit.
Brett Daniels?
Thank you very much. Again, Braden, I want you to know that there's no such thing as government money. It's tax dollars. Those are tax dollars. Government doesn't print money except at the federal level. Citrus Heights is looking pretty darn good also. You know, we are thriving. We've got a 25% surplus in our budget. We have sales and services around the Sunrise Mall area of $400 million. We're doing pretty darn good. Come on down. I'll buy you dinner at Black Angus. So I fully, fully, fully support the DA's decision to file this lawsuit. I was shocked when I drove in today on 12th Street, the inbound 160, and I saw after a very long period of time, they finally made people clear the sidewalks area. It's unconscionable what the city of Sacramento doesn't do for its citizens. It's just unconscionable. You don't have to allow blight and public nuisance to occur in the name of allowing homelessness to occur. It just has to change. And so nobody supports the effort that the Sacramento, Sacramento city does. Nobody, nobody, because it's a failed effort. We saw just recently the opening of the Capital Hotel, or whatever it's called downtown, to the tune of over $500,000 a unit to house homeless people. That is unconscionable. That is such an incredible waste of tax dollars. I can't wait for Sacramento City to be under different leadership, and I'm sure the people of Sacramento feel the same way.
This is the last question on this topic. Rosario Rodriguez, simply building more won't necessarily address affordability concerns. So what steps should the county be taking in the future to ensure affordability needs will be met?
So when it comes to housing, I think, you know, one of the, then the main problem that we have is we have a shortage of housing. And we have, and I think that's like, that's, that's really the main problem, is we need to be able to create more housing, more affordable housing for the individuals that need to be able to get into the housing that they need. I think some of the problems that we have right now is the cost that is going into some of, you know, of the $178 million. Brett Daniels just raised the Capital Park Hotel, which converted a hotel into, you know, housing at the cost of $500,000 per unit. That is just way too costly, and so I think it's reevaluating the money that we're spending to create more housing. You know, Sacramento County Project Room Key had 400 rooms from the peak of late 2020 until, for a couple of years, and they spent almost a million dollars per month on, on, what is it, key, hotel turnkey rooms. And again, that is just an amount of money that is astronomical, and how many of those individuals actually got housing? Minuscule. And so I think we have a problem when it comes to spending that we can utilize in other areas of, to be able to either create more housing or to be able to create areas where people can get the full services they need with mental health and addiction and housing. Thank you.
Brett Daniels?
Yeah, I touched on it a minute ago, and it does involve public and private partnerships, working together, the public sector, the private sector, identifying land where homes can go into, and identifying ways to pay for those things. You know, one of the best things about this new development in Citrus Heights is that it's located right in the heart of the commercial areas, school areas. It's not something that we, you know, went and put into some distant field or industrial area. These people are at home now, and their children are at home, and they can go to school just down the street, and that's the way it should be. So you have to identify those areas. And it's very important to remember that, that this $175 million, or more than $175 million that the Sac, that Sac County spent last year on homelessness was so wasted. million that Sac, that Sac County spent last year on homelessness was so wasted. Because again, do you see things better or do you see things worse? $175 million, and we still see what we see today, and it's getting worse. We have to find better ways to spend dollars. Stop having programs that do nothing but cause staffing, jobs. You know, Rosario touched on it a little bit, and there's truth about it. If you, you know, it may be the elephant in the room, but there's too many people making too much money in the homelessness industry, and it needs to stop. And we need to focus dollars on solutions and not people. And there's another word I'm thinking about, studying the problem. We don't need to study the problem. We know the problem.
Braden Murphy.
Oh, wow, there's so much here to address, but I guess I will address it. I mean, Brett tries to land this thing about government money. I'm fully aware that the budgets that the government spend is our tax dollars that they've, that they've received, and that money needs to be stewarded and spent smartly, which is what my policies are trying to do. My opponents have both just agreed that they support a frivolous lawsuit that's going to cost millions of your dollars to go through. And what is going to be the result at the end of that? Is that going to house people? Is that going to make the streets cleaner beyond a short period of time temporarily until more people that are struggling end up on that same street? No! It's a political ploy from the typical elected officials doing the same old thing, wanting to waste your money. Then they say that the services alone are not cutting it? Yes, because we don't have the shelters and the housing to pair with those services. And it is the job of the cities, which is, my two opponents both sit on a city council, to get the affordable units developed and made in their city, and then it is the county's job to provide the services. You cannot service people who do not have shelter to be at while they're receiving that shelter. They are approving projects from developers that don't address any of our needs while complaining about it and wanting to spend your tax dollars on lawsuits. And they've, they've both agreed. And they claim they're fiscally conservative, and the only thing they agree about is they want to do it on a lawsuit that won't house anybody or take care of anybody. It's, it's just, I'm speechless.
Okay, we're changing the subject now. We began with Brett Daniels. Policing policies and practices have been at the forefront of public discussion and review in recent years. How do you define public safety and what may need to change, if anything, to build trust that law enforcement will serve all communities more equitably?
Thank you for that question. You know, it's, it's a good question because it's, there's nothing more important than public safety. There's nothing more important than the safety of you and your family. And, you know, policing and policies and procedures and all of that, the bottom line is, we need to make sure that people are safe. We need to make sure that the sheriff's department is fully funded, that they're funded to a level where they can actually put out patrol services. They're only mandated to put out services in the courts and the jails. So actually, one of the things that I hope to do coming forward as a supervisor is to create a county ordinance that requires a certain level of the budget go towards patrol. Guys in cars responding to your house when you need it. That's very important. You know, there's another thing in when you want to talk about procedures and policies that we need to face as society. We need to get back to respecting law enforcement. We need to teach our children to respect law enforcement. Does that mean law enforcement is perfect? Far from it. They make mistakes. Things go on. But if there's a mistake, you need to not resist that mistake. You need to go along with it so that nobody is hurt and it can be rectified later. So teach your children to respect law enforcement. In the end, everybody will be much safer.
Braden Murphy.
Yes, this is really important. Public safety is very important. I would have loved to have the support of, of the public safety, and I had great conversations with them, but unfortunately, they supported my opponent because she's actively raising to, actively fighting to directly raise your taxes, which would go right into their pocket immediately. And so of course, they supported her for that, and I actually don't blame them. But I can just not sign off on another tax that's going to be hurting the middle class hard when they go to the store to try to provide for their kids. But like, let's look at a real example of what's happening with public safety. Almost, almost, and then over half in some jurisdictions of all police calls are related to homelessness in some way. And then when they get there, a homeless person likely having a mental breakdown or having a stroke because they're addicted to drugs, yet there's no, there's not enough facilities for them to go to, and it's unclear for which the cops to do about that. And they have to make a tough decision as to whether to arrest them, which Brett mostly seems to favor, or just let them be on the sidewalk struggling. And the thing about it is, we're paying over $100,000 per inmate. So anytime they talk to you about wanting to jail homeless people, it's actually not supporting the police. It's not supporting public safety. It's the most expensive way that we could possibly do things, and then they end up back on the streets anyways. We've got to elect kind, caring, compassionate, community-oriented people who care to actually come together and come up with new solutions to get the job done, not waste your tax money and regurgitate old talking points.
Rosario Rodriguez.
Yeah, well, I am very proud to have earned the endorsement of this Sacramento County probation, Sacramento County deputy sheriffs, and the Sacramento area firefighters. Public safety is the number-one responsibility of our county in the budget. Sacramento County's budget for criminal justice is currently only 18% of the budget. Fire and EMT are governed separately by the Sac Metro District. People can play with stats, but the public's concern is growing that crime is real. According to the Bureau of Crime Statistics, violent crimes in Sacramento area rose 45% since 2019. While we are currently working to build this new jail, you know, and I can't speak to the amount that is being spent, but I do support building a jail that will ensure that we can safely secure prisoners and not be forced to release dangerous felons to our neighbors. I also want to state that for the past, I don't know, 20 years, we, we, we have looked at homelessness from a kind, compassionate, community-oriented focus, and you can look at where we are today with that. I also want to make a correction, that I am not fighting to raise taxes. That is a very dishonest statement that my opponent is saying. What I did on the Folsom City Council was approve language to come back to the council about whether it would be, whether it be a general or a specific, but I did not approve it and nor have I championed for it. Thank you.
Brett Daniels.
I already answered that one.
Oh, Braden, did you answer it?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Next question for Braden. Do you see the need for civilian oversight and/or review of law enforcement practices and policies? Why or why not?
So first, a lot of slippery stuff going on. Folsom City Council has a structural deficit in the budget that's been going on for years, and the Sacramento Bee and other outlets have covered this. It has passed three to two to advance an increase in the sales tax in the Folsom budget. Anybody can go look that up. YK and Ana voted against it, and Rosario has supported it, and that's why she got the police, the support of public safety. But hey, if you're, if you're a firefighter out there, or if you're in public safety and you, you would like to support me, now hearing that she's lying or changing her opinion on that, that's great because I don't support a local tax increase, even though that, that she clearly does. And so I think that that's, that's important, that's important to point that out. I mean, we can't just keep changing what the facts are and be, and be treated as a serious leader. To actually address these problems in a way that is meaningful and impactful and different before is what we need to do. They keep tricking this wording. She was so excited, you could tell, to get those talking points in about being endorsed by police and fire, and I don't blame her for that. But it came at a cost that anybody can go look up, anybody could go Google, and that's the reality. I cannot support an increase on taxes on a middle-class family, even though I would love to have the support of firefighters, because it's very important, and I'll leave it at that.
Do you see a need for civilian oversight?
My, I, I think that it is better to be able to hold elected officials accountable. Yes, I do. However, what happens with these committees a lot of times is the elected officials just get their, get their say anyways. If the committee has teeth that can hold public accountability, public officials accountable, then yes, so that it would be taxpayers' well spent. But if it's just a meeting and then elected officials do whatever they want, maybe not. Thank you, sorry.
Rosario Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that all information that is spoken here tonight is all public. Anything can go back and be verified. In regards to this statement that we are now in a structural deficit, currently we are not. Our next budget looks like it may have a very small deficit, but that isn't, that it will, that's something that will come this summer. And also, I did not vote for a tax measure. It was to bring back language. Want to make sure that those are. As far as civilian oversight, no, I do not support that. I think that, I think that we need to let our police department and officers do their internal work and be able to, that we can be able to trust what it is that they are doing. But I do not support civilian oversight.
Brett Daniels.
Well, I'll just jump into the tax fray. Braden touched on some, I think, some good points. You know, Folsom is going from a $206 million budget in 2018 to a $246 million budget for '23, '24. It's a $40 million increase. At the same time, they have known they're going into a structural deficit, and at the same time, they have still provided raises, and especially to their city manager who makes over $400,000 in salary and benefits. It's ridiculous. That's not how you lead. You lead by saying, it's a tough decision, but we've got to find ways to cut, not increase our expenses. And so that, you need to really examine that issue that Braden has brought up. I will say that I do agree with Rosario that I don't support civilian oversight in, over law enforcement. It's something that has already, there are layers that exist already in place for issues in law enforcement. And believe me, anybody in law enforcement will tell you this, that the biggest worry for them is not what happens to them on the street, it's how they're judged by those they work for when they get off work. So it's, it's tough to be a cop in America. It's tough to be one in Sacramento County. It's really tough when you have things hanging over your head, and you have to make a split decision, split-second decision on how you handle something, and then somebody else gets to judge you for days, weeks, months, maybe years after that on your decision. So no, I do not support the civilian oversight.
Okay, Rosario Rodriguez. Assembly Bill 2761 reflected concerns about deaths while in law enforcement custody. How will you address the high incidence of deaths from multiple causes, which would be suicide, homicide, medical emergencies in our county criminal justice system? And you may have answered this, but do you support the billion-dollar expansion of the jail?
Well, you know, in the recent stories that came out late last year, there were some compromised medical services that were partnered with the county where drugs and other form of paraphernalia were entering into the county jail. So I think Sheriff Cooper had highlighted those concerns in, in a public post that he made. And so I think really having an audit and having internal programs ensure that we are doing what we can to protect those that are in custody. But I think that's really one of the reasons why there were just, I think, several overdoses that were happening. As far as the $1 billion, you know, it's very difficult to be able to say whether I think $1 billion is appropriate or not appropriate, but I do support, you know, having a place where prisoners who deserve to be in jail should go. I also want to make a really quick comment that, about Citrus Heights, because Citrus Heights in the years of 2016 to 2020, Citrus Heights had a city manager that was one of the 10th highest-paid city managers in California. No other city in Sacramento region was on that list. And this is at a time when Mr. Brett Daniels was on the city council. Thank you.
Brett Daniels.
Yeah. How shall I say it gently? I worked pretty hard to make sure that we didn't continue with that city manager. I didn't make the decision when he got his contract. I didn't set his salary until he came into existence, excuse me, until I came back into the council in 2016. And it didn't last very much longer after that until we decided on a new city manager. Our current city manager makes about $300,000 total salary and benefits, and so we're doing it right. We're doing it right. And I can tell you this, we also had a budget of $59 million in 2018. We had a budget of $69 million in 2023, and again, at the same time, we've got a 25% surplus. That's with us also giving the county of Sacramento $100 million over the last 25 years just to be a city. So we're doing pretty darn good there. You know, what's going on in the jail is unconscionable as far as the being forced to do something. The May's consent decree is forcing the county to do something. I hope that can change. I don't support an expansion of the jail. I support the ability to get better mental health services for those that need it. We don't need to do anything that, you know, people die in jail because of many different things. They don't have a good lifestyle. They come in, they've been on drugs a lot, they've been engaged in criminal activity a lot. I don't think the problem is, is something that we need to point at the officers in the jail. I've worked the jail. I know the atmosphere. There's cameras everywhere, and I know Sheriff Cooper is running a fine operation, and that's not where the focus needs to be.
Braden Murphy.
Oh, well, so much there. It's just, it's alarming that it, that it seem, she thinks it's a real answer to say she doesn't think there's a structural deficit now, but there's probably going to be next year. And she's been on the city council for over four years, almost four years now. And the reality is, they're running into a problem because they weren't able to figure it out, and now they're faced with either raising your taxes or cutting public safety, and both of those ones are really difficult, and it's just, you know, it's just a failure to be in that position. So I think that's, it's honestly, I'm kind of, kind of stumped that that was a real answer to say, not right now, but next year. I mean, we just cannot have that at the county level. That would be so devastating. For those that don't know, this budget for the county level is going to be at about $9 billion by the time that I take office. And if we have somebody that's like, not now, but later, we're going to have a budget problem, and then debate whether cutting fire, police, or raising your taxes in this seat, that is super dangerous. As far as people dying in custody, yeah, that's terrible. That needs oversight. That needs to be monitored. That should never happen. And what we need to do, instead of worrying about taking people to jail at an all-time high price, we need to be implementing the policies that I've talked about, which is taking care of people where they're at, providing policies that are going to help workers so that less people have to go to jail, so that there's less stress in the jail, and that less people are dying, obviously. To do things the most highest, most expensive way while our budgets are failing and they want to raise your taxes is insane.
Do you support the billion-dollar expansion of the jail?
Oh, absolutely not. 100% not. We cannot raise middle-class taxpayers bills already, and we need to look at spending the money we have, taking care of people where they're at, so that they don't have to get arrested in the back of a police car just to receive services with your tax dollars.
Brett Daniels. Reducing gun violence calls for more than just registering firearms and trying to get guns off the streets. What strategies or policies have you supported or will you support to address gun violence prevention?
Well, I don't agree with the, the term gun violence. My, my term is violence. Doesn't matter if it's with a gun, with a knife, whatever. It doesn't matter. And to call it gun violence moves away from what the real issue is. We need to hold people accountable. That's what we do. We hold people accountable. We don't take away the rights of law-abiding citizens who, under the Second Amendment, have an absolute right to protect themselves. That's why I'm endorsed by the Sacramento Pistol Rifle Association. They know that I believe in that right and that I've expressed that for 25 years now. And so let's focus on violence. Let's put people in jail and keep them there when they deserve to be in jail. That's the main thing. But there is also another factor, and it's the glorification of violence. So many of our children are being taught this glorification of violence through whatever means. We just had another horrible situation where a two-year-old stabbed a 10-year-old, I think it is. And recently, we had a, what was it, a 10-year-old that shot another 10-year-old. There's just no doubt in my mind that the glorification of violence was in these kids' lives. So we need to find ways to intervene on that and, and not have a, a child who wants to, who thinks it's good to grow up and glorify violence. That's not it. So let's, let's stay away from attacking firearms and, and people's right to defend themselves and focus on what the actual problem is.
Braden Murphy.
Well, yeah, thank you for the question. This is really emotional because, as we all know, it's hard not to turn on the news and see another mass shooting. It seems like almost every day there, there is a mass shooting. And it is disproportionately people with mental health issues because elected officials are not doing a good enough job running governments and government programs and providing the most basic care for those that are struggling. And then people end up going to jail, and it's very expensive. And politicians like Brett just keep saying, lock them up, lock them up, as it is the most expensive way to take care of people. Right? So we need to... So we need to understand that, that we're, our politicians are not addressing the root of the problem, allowing these terrible things to happen. I'm for mental health programs, especially at a young age, taking care of people. And if we had things like shelters and affordable housing, that would help people not be mentally stable, unstable. But then also, yes, we have to look at assault rifles, weapons of war that can kill people, many, many people within minutes. We don't be, we don't need, we don't need to be allowing that, and especially not before people are allowed to go to certain casinos at the age of 21, can they get a gun that can do this. So we need to get ahead of the problem by talking about all the things that I've discussed tonight, and so we don't have to rely on how to, how to take care of people when they're already killing people. And we need to not allow people to buy assault rifles at such a young age. It's not about freedom, it's about common sense.
Rosario Rodriguez?
Thank you. I just want to make a correction. Mr. Brayden said that Folsom has been in a deficit for years, and that is just not true. In the three years that I have been on the Folsom City Council, I have seen Mr. Murphy one time in the chambers about gun violence prevention. Well, I, I think the bottom line is, we need to tackle crime and hold criminals accountable. That's the main problem. But I'm also a big supporter of taking funding and pouring it back into neighborhoods where some of this crime is deriving from. I'm really big on making schools better and bringing in programs that will allow some of these young kids to grow up with better opportunities, enhancing neighborhoods, enhancing community centers, bringing in a boys' or girls' club, bringing in programs that will allow some of these neighborhoods where these kids are coming from or young adults, and just enhancing, just making enhancements to communities. Thank you.
All right. Last question before closing remarks. And we'll begin with you, Rosario.
Okay.
Do you believe that climate change requires urgent action, and what would you do to reduce the carbon footprint of our region's activities significantly and quickly?
So since 2011, there have been five times where a climate action proposal has come before the board of supervisors, and it's been declined. And I, I believe there's another one coming up in 2024. I believe that climate change is real, but most of the proposed solutions are not. Greenhouse gas emissions and climate resilience regulations should consider the economic impact, practical viability, and realistic timelines, none of which have been on the forefront of the debate. So I, you know, I, I believe that ensuring that we do better with our air quality is, and, and other aspects that impact climate change are important, but right now, it is just very difficult. It makes things more expensive. I've, I've continued to say that I will drive an electric car when the lower socioeconomic of our county can afford to have one, where they can be able to have the resources to plug their cars in, and I don't see that happening anytime soon.
Brett Daniels?
Thank you very much. You know, we're so focused on a fight of climate change. Is it there? Is it real? Is it not real? It, it just wastes so much money to have this fight. I sit on the Sacramento Air Quality Board. The budget's around $100 million just for the Sacramento region. We made the air great over the years, and now, when we hit the attainments, they, they turn around and make them more stringent. So there's a big, there's big money being made. It's like homelessness, like we talked about earlier. There's so much money being made in climate change or not, that, you know, we have to keep having that fight. What we should focus on is just clean the air, just clean water, do things to make things better. You know, we've done that. We've made cars so much better. There's other ways we can make things so much better, but to fight about whether or not it's climate change, that, that's just ridiculous. So let's just do things better and, and have that focus. If you want an electric car, go out and buy one. That's wonderful. If you don't want an electric car, believe me, the cars of today, they're not polluting that much at all. So we have to focus on reality. That's the main thing. Focus on reality, stop forcing things, stop taking away our gas stoves and stuff like that. Just the silliness that comes along in this idea of fighting climate change just needs to stop. We need to stop, stop focusing so much money into programs, people, and stuff like that, and just focus money into things that actually can make things better.
Brayden Murphy?
Yeah, thank you. So just really quickly, I'll address, because I was personally attacked by Rosario. I didn't say the city of Folsom's been in a structural deficit for years. I've said for years, they've known that they were headed into a structural deficit and have not done anything about it, and that their answer now to deal with that is to raise your taxes. Next, she hits me because I've only been to the board chambers one time that she's noticed. I was born with cerebral palsy. I have four kids that I'm raising, two of them I adopted from foster care, one just came out of diapers and the other one's in diapers. I record every single meeting, and I watch and follow every vote that happens. If you, if you paid attention here today, I might know the votes better than she does. So to hit me for not being there is really odd, because I don't have the luxury to do that necessarily, because the time that I'm able to be out making change in my community, I've started organizations to help feed the homeless. I've testified at the Capitol to give more people healthcare, to stand up for in-home caretakers getting a better wage, because my wife is my in-home caretaker, because I have cerebral palsy. When the, when the meetings are recorded, it does not make sense for me to spend a lot of time there. That was an absolute crazy comment to me. I just can't believe she said that. But, but on the climate change, climate change is real, definitely. I know, I'm running out of time, I'll hurry and say it. We do need to address climate change, but we need to do it in a way that doesn't hurt the middle class, and the middle class can feel connected. When we build affordable housing, solar has to go on top of those roofs, and we need to make electric cars accessible to people who traditionally could not afford them.
All right. Time for closing statements, and we'll begin with Rosario Rodriguez.
Okay, well, as I mentioned earlier, I am a business owner and a council member with a record of getting things done and being accessible to the public. As supervisor, I will continue to be accessible to the public and look for best ideas for making the lives better of those in District 4. We do this not by attacking those we disagree with, but also by listening to them and by tackling the best ideas and demanding real results and accountability for the outcome. I'll continue to focus on neighborhood safety, fixing our broken roads, making it easier to prosper and create jobs, and demand real accountability and demand progress to reduce homelessness. Let me touch on homelessness as my closing statement. I have a commitment that I will, that I will see, and as a county supervisor, I will be insured to drive this homeless issue to, to a better position that where we are, where we are today. I am very motivated, I am, I am eager, I am passionate about homelessness, I am results-driven, and I am committed to ensuring that this issue have some resolution within, with my time on the county supervisor, county supervisor. Thank you.
Brett Daniels?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think you did get to see what I said, is there are differences between us. I think in one, some ways, we're very much alike, and in other ways, there are stark differences. And so, that's a good thing, and, and I hope plenty of people get to see this. We have our focuses. My focus, main focus is in the homelessness area and roads. We've got to do something about those two things and stop spending money on so many other things. The county has a budget of almost $9 million. Just five years ago, it was half that. Where is the money going? There are over 13,000 people working for the county in over 1,000 different job classifications. We need to do fewer things better. Stop spending money on so many things. Do fewer things better. Focus on homelessness, focus on roads. Again, you saw us, we're different, we're supported by different people. My opponents are supported by labor unions, PACs, big developers, and liberal progressive groups. If you want that, go with one of those two. I'm supported by moms and dads, some of our electeds at the school levels and some of at the city council levels. I'm just a good old boy and hope that you'll vote for me on March 5th.
Brayden Murphy?
Well, this has been great, and thank you for having the three of us. Look, voters in this race are going to have a clear decision. Would they like to go for an elected official climbing the ladder that's failed us, or would they like the chance for change? You want to ask yourself two questions. One is, are we going in the right direction? Clearly, we're not. So let's please elect an outsider. And in my case, you might ask yourself a second question. Can he win? Well, in 2022, I got over 226,000 votes and way more in the district here than any of my opponents have ever gotten, and I'm endorsed by the nurses, teachers, SEIU, all of California Labor, Planned Parenthood, and the Democratic Party. But it's not just liberal versus conservative, as I laid out here today. It's common sense versus the same old, same old. I have over 100 people walking for me every day. My commercials are getting ready to go live next week. Please look for my team and I on the street corner waving signs. Go to my website, braydenforsac.com. I'll be happy to have you on the team. And let's make change. Let's put Sacramento County on the right direction so that our families and grandkids can want to live here again. We cannot have the same old, same old. Thank you very much.
And that concludes our forum. I want to thank these candidates for running for office and for being here today to answer these questions that we received from voters. And voters, you can find your ballot and nonpartisan voter information on candidates and propositions at vote411.org. And you are a more informed voter if you watch this forum, so we hope you will pass on what you learned. You can also pass on a recording of this forum. A YouTube link to the recording will be available at the League of Women Voters website after February 5th, and that website is lvw sacramento.org. And we thank the League volunteers and the wonderful team here at Sacramento Metro Cable